The zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, August 2nd. Do I have a motion to open?
So motioned.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are off and running here. Sorry. Echo. All right. Well, at least they can hear me. Twice. All right. First on the docket here. Continuation of application 2023-6. 912 Salem Street. Advocate Mark A. Abair. A public hearing in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, as amended for application 2023-6, made by Mark A. Abair for the premises located at 912 Salem Street, map 41, lot 095, in the industrial 1 residential R1 and residential R2 zoning districts, currently owned by William T. Bryan III for a special permit in accordance with Section 50.4.5, Table of Uses, of the Grove and Zoning Bylaws for our contractor's yard.
They are requesting another continuance for this matter. They are still working on finalizing their wetland delineation and their traffic study. They're hoping to be ready by the September 6th meeting. So they're just looking to continue until then.
All right.
Does that put us in any time restraints, any limitations that we have?
They had already asked to extend that. So we're all set. Like the 90-day thing? Is that what you're referring to? Yeah. We're all set on that.
Perfect. Then I'll make a motion to continue application 2023-6 for 912 Salem Street till September 6th at 7:30 PM.
All right. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Next. New application 2024-1. We're in 2024 already, folks. For One Manor Drive, building number 2, applicant Arrowpoint Union Grove LLC. A public hearing in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, as amended for application 2024-1, made by Arrowpoint Union Grove LLC for the premises located at One Manor Drive, building 2, Grove in Massachusetts, map 103, lot 10, in the residential R2 zoning district for a modification of a special permit issued in 1961 pursuant to the Town of Grove and zoning bylaws as amended to March 13, 1961, Section 2-7N, to allow for dwellings of three or more families. This modification is to request a third floor to be added to building number 2. All right. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to get up and explain your application? If we start by listing your name and your...
Good evening, board members. My name is Rafael Hernandez. I'm from Acropolis Design Consultants. We're the designers and architects for the project. Building 2, One Manor Drive, was a four-unit building that had a fire loss, fire event last, earlier this year, I believe. Such things are tragic, and what we want to propose all possible options to our clients and to the stakeholders. We are aware of... I mean, you're all aware of the news about regarding lack of housing of this type in the region, and would like to help by adding two additional units to the inventory of the community. The fire severely damaged the building. Demolition of the second floor and roof and gutting of the remainder will be required. Our team saw the opportunity to possibly add two additional units and another floor to the building, making the building a three-story building with six apartments. The building footprint and style would not, will be maintained, except for the third floor. There, this is, we're essentially duplicating the second floor onto the third and putting the same roof back on, on the building. The additional units will not greatly affect the parking. According to our calculations, we have about 40 extra spaces in the property. And traffic, two units of this type in this kind of condominium, we don't feel that it affects the standards of the community. A full sprinkler system will be installed. A full alarm system will be installed in the building. It'll be up to today's code, based on the new energy code. So the building will have higher insulation values, new windows, new doors, new HVAC systems, and which will increase the efficiency of the entire structure. Second means of egress will be added to provide more safety. And we feel that this type of project, it's only going to enhance the neighborhood in that area and will add additional needed housing in, at this, at this price point for this area. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions for the board? The applicant?
Is this just for this one building? Or are we going to do every building along the way?
This is only for this building. This is a special situation where, was a fire loss. And yeah, so we're only applying for this one building.
Now, you said condos. Did you mean apartments?
I misspoke. Apartments, yes. No problem. Thank you.
Any questions? John, you good?
Nope. Good.
All right. I think I'm good for now. I mean, I think the board would like to take a little time to examine the application and just to make sure we go over everything to make sure that we don't miss anything here. Would there be any objection to continuing to a further meeting before we approve the application in full?
Hi. I'm one of the owners that represents Union Grove. As far as review, I don't have...
Would you be able to step to the microphone, please?
Hi. Thanks for... Jay Goldberg. I'm one of the owners at Union Grove Arrowpoint LLC. I just, from the standpoint of reviewing up to this point, which you've reviewed to this point. And in talking with the building commissioner, Sam Jocelyn, he said there was nothing in the bylaws he was concerned about. And so as far as reviewing, can we, is there a way to get permission tonight? So, and then it's just any specifics that you guys want at this, at this point? I'm just, we'd just like to move forward so we can get started, bring in the building, and start working on the building again as soon as we can, without delaying it further, because we've been waiting a long time. That's my only concern.
All right. Is there an objection to, for the month? It would be to our next meeting? Or...
It's not an objection. It's just more of a, I guess, ask or request that what would need to be further reviewed based on what information you've had to this point.
The building is like Rafael Hernandez, Acropolis Design. Through the chair, the building is exposed, and we don't want to maintain it exposed, further damaging the structure.
All right. Are there any... Thank you very much. Is there any public comment about this? No? All right. Board discussion. What do we think?
Do we have that criteria in which we would have to approve?
I mean, so my understanding of the old zoning laws, when this project was approved, was just that it was for over a certain number of units, right?
Oh, sorry. Yes. So we are making this determination not based on our... Sorry.
Three or more.
We are making this determination based on our old zoning bylaws, not our current ones with the seven different criteria. So the criteria listed in the old zoning bylaws from, that were as amended to March 13, 1961, state, any of the following uses, provided it is not injurious, noxious, or offensive to the neighborhood, and only if authorized by the Board of Appeals. And then lists a bunch. And the last one is dwellings of three or more families.
Yeah.
So we're making the determination on injurious, noxious, or offensive to the neighborhood.
So given the existing use of that area and that property, adding two more units seems consistent with that use. I don't feel like it violates any of those, those issues. I'd be, I'd be for it.
All right. John?
I'm fine with that.
Sure?
Sounds good.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah. I'll motion to accept the application for the modification for the third floor.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor to approve application 24, 24-1?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Moving on here. So, new application 20 for 24-2 for 6 Union Street. Applicant Stephen and Jennifer Hoffman in Alley, excuse me, Allen Berry. A public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, as amended for application 2023, 2024-2, made by Stephen and Jennifer Hoffman in Allen Berry for the premises located at 6 Union Street, Grove in Mass, map 11, lot 136, in the residential R3 zoning district for a variance from the Grove and Zoning Bylaw, Section 50-7.1, accessory apartments. The variance requests that the accessory apartment not be within the existing dwelling and separated by a common wall. Is the application, applicant present?
Good evening. My name is Brad Latham. I'm here on behalf of the applicants from, going from my direction. Allen Berry is sitting in front. Next to him is his daughter Jenna Hoffman. And then beyond him is Steve Hoffman. In the second row is Denise Beben, who I will reference during the presentation. As was stated, the property is 6 Union Street. It's in a residential 3R3 district, which requires 20,000 square feet. The lot has an acre, so it's over twice the size required. On the property is an attractive center entrance colonial, located at the front of the property. The property rises precipitously from the front to the back, and that's one of the issues we're dealing with here today. The proposal is to build a freestanding garage and have on the second floor of the garage an accessory apartment. We are aware that the zoning bylaw requires that an accessory apartment have a common wall, be part of a one building. And so that's the nature of the relief we're asking for, is a variance because of the dimensional issue. The purpose of the location of the garage is to not take away from the attractive nature of the, of the main building itself. And that's, that's a crucial feature. The Hoffmanns love antique homes. They want to preserve the character of this particular property. We do realize we have to meet the statutory criteria, both laid out in the zoning bylaw and the state statute. I'd like to go through those if I could. And we state that there are circumstances relating to the shape or topography of the site or the structure. And I'd like to recite the ones that we believe meet that criteria. First of all, the shape of the structure. If you saw the site plan, I'm sure. It's an unusual J-shaped building. An addition on the back is long and thin. That layout makes it difficult to try and build two, construct by demising wall, two separate units within that particular layout of the structure. It's also an old dwelling, post-in-beam construction, which also has some effect on the ability to do that. The, the second feature is if we try and add an attaching additional structure to it, so it is one building, we end up with significant impacts from that. First of all, there'd be windows lost in the kitchen, second-floor bedroom, porch, and accessory unit itself, as shown in the plan, would lose windows, which we don't think is a positive feature for the occupants. And we believe that that's a significant criteria here. In addition, the topography is a major feature. The, as I said earlier, it rises significantly from the grade of Union Street to the back of where we're proposing to put the separate building. It's 16 feet in elevation. It goes up also from there. So it's a very difficult grade. When you face the property from the street, on the right-hand side, it's even steeper. So it really precludes much, much by way of option as a way to trying to fix an addition onto this particular building. So it's for that reason that we're seeking relief to be able to have something that does not impact the attractive nature and the functioning of the existing dwelling itself. And the, it is important to the Hoffmanns that they, in fact, be able to have an accessory apartment. Of course, we all know having a garage is rather important in this environment, climate. But beyond that is the issue of the accessory building. They'd like to have Jenna's mother be able to live with them. She's a retired individual on a fixed income. She would like to be able to find a place, the agent place. Right now, the benefit to, also to the Hoffmanns would be that she could care for their children. They're both a working couple, both of them, and they have children. And that would help them a great deal if, in fact, they could have that kind of relief and be able to have an accessory apartment. And the last features of the variance I'd like to go through, it will not derogate from the public good or be derogate from intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. A number of points there. The addition, its location is unobtrusive. As I say, it's being intentionally located to take advantage of not to be hurt by the contours, but also not to have the garage overwhelm the features of the dwelling itself. So that's the reason why the location is picked. If you look at aerial photos of the site, actually, the building would be located right where there's an open area, so it doesn't result in a loss of vegetation. No significant trees would be affected by that. It would retain the character of the dwelling itself. As far as its impact on the butters, there is screening. There's a six-foot solid fence on the easterly side. The dwelling itself would block it from the, the street, which is the north side, and also on the westerly side would be blocked as well. So it would not have an impact on the neighborhood, and no negative impact. Part of the question I see calmly, board is concerned, would I be setting a precedent? That's going to be problematic. I'd suggest not so. This is the unique site, the unique location of a historic building. And we're simply trying to honor that and to not have some sort of a detrimental effect. I'd also like to point out, we looked at possible areas where this garage might be affixed to the dwelling. If we try to put it on the easterly side, there's also a very nice tree that would obstruct the vehicles trying to use the garage. By the way, it's situated in an angled lot. It avoids any impact on that tree, any loss of that tree as a consequence of that. A last point is that there's no density consequence of your given relief. You still have two particularly units on the site. And the site, of course, is oversized, as I mentioned at the beginning. So that's, that's, I think, an important point we ask you to consider. We have been, been given a copy of certain memos that you have that will be given this evening. And I'd like to indicate that on behalf of the applicant, none of the items raised are problematic. There would be one water, one sewer service, and it is on town sewer. And it would run through the dwelling. It'd be one meter, which I know the bylaw requires and the town was looking for. And the other features could also be addressed. We looked, as I said, we looked at putting it, attaching it to the back of the building. That would end up really destroying the patio, the porch that's there. In addition, the roof on that porch is a shed roof. It would run the water right down into the addition, which, again, is nonsensical in our environment. So I appreciate your time, and the folks should answer any particular questions you have. And I want to advise, I have a hearing problem, so I may have to step forward if you ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Board questions for the applicant?
No. Okay.
So you just said the...
Oh, yeah. You're right. That the electrical is going to be okay? That it's 100 amp panel now? And you saw the memo?
They're actually going to upgrade that to 400.
Okay.
They have a personal electrician, Ellen, who today I looked at it. He agrees with the sound's gone.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
You won't have my hearing.
Jason, any questions?
No.
All right. Is there any public comments?
Um, did we get any comments from any of butters that objected to this?
Yeah, that was...
Brown letters.
Okay. Yeah, I saw them. Yeah.
And I will say, so at the end of your packet, I had been out on site visits for a few hours this afternoon, so I missed these when they originally came in and didn't see them again until 6. You have three, yeah, three additional comments out of packet at the very, very end. Or Jason might have put them on top.
I did.
Oh, okay. So there were three more comments, emails that I received while I was out in support. So I think that was my total. And I received no negative comments. And I didn't receive any other calls or anything like that.
Right. Thank you.
Another public comment? All right. Then we'll go to board discussion. Gentlemen, what do we think?
I'm not a big fan of separate, but I drove by there and could see the layout. And I don't really see too many other ways it can be done. And if it's fam, you know, it's going to be family. I'm okay with that.
I agree.
Jason?
I'm good.
Yeah, I agree as well. I don't see, I don't see any reason, as far as I'm concerned, why this would be an issue in any aspect, whether it be safety of butters, detriment to the area. I think, I think it only brings benefits. And she's probably, at least in my opinion, is probably the way that the town bylaw should be moving to anyways. But that's a matter for a later date. But I, I think I'm fine with it as well.
All right. So, so do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the plan for 6 Union Street?
A second.
All right. The motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. 24-2 is passed unanimously. Thank you, folks. Thank you, folks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Jim.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, and good luck.
All right. So next, on the thing, on the agenda is 154 Center Street, which is the, which is the trash removal company. So to bring everyone up to speed on where we are with that. So, following our last meeting when we had, we had the owner and Jesse, we went through the sightings from Sam when Sam went and inspected the facility and noticed there was five specific non-conformances with the original ruling. The, the owner made his opinions known. Following that, on the, based on the board's direction, Sam Jocelyn, the zoning enforcement officer, issued a letter to the owner, giving him 30 days to come within compliance. That letter was dated July 20th, which should have been received by the applicant by this point. That, that letter instructs him that he has 30 days to come within compliance until penalty enforcement starting, and that's compliance with all major points. Then following a period after that, the board would take further action as far as what we see fit for continued non-compliance at this point. Annie, I think we got some feedback from Jesse as well regarding one of the non-compliance notes?
Yes. In your meeting packet towards the end, you will see a letter. It is your blue highlighted email packet. There was a lot of emails, so I tried to keep them organized. So Jesse had originally emailed me back in July looking to get the process started for filing for a fence for the Conservation Commission. And as you can see, he decided to just go with temporary fencing for now. I had reached out again Monday, asking, or saying that the zoning board was meeting and that this was going to be on the agenda. And I asked if he could please provide a letter to the board with an update, or if possible, would you be able to be present? And you can see his response. He said, "Hi, Annie. I had sent this email. I'm not continuing with the permanent fence for the time being. Thanks, Jesse." Thanks, Jesse." And then you can see he just copy and pasted that email from a couple weeks ago, a couple weeks ago, I think, saying that he was just going to be going with the temporary fencing option for now. I received this Monday night, and I was off yesterday, so I haven't responded yet. I also kind of wanted to wait, hold off, just because I knew that the board would be meeting, and I didn't want to preemptively send an email saying one thing if the board, you know...
So what's the issue with the fencing?
So, no issue with the fencing. Well, I shouldn't say that, I guess. So he was required to put in that fencing, and he hadn't. So because of where the fencing is in the whole, the fence posts, excuse me, that would need to be dug for it, he would have to file with the Conservation Commission because it's ground impact close to a wetland resource area. And so I had been communicating with him about that, and you know, just because I'm also the conservation agent, just like helping him kind of get that application together, and I hadn't heard from him, and so he followed up with that email, saying that I'm just going to go with temporary fencing, which wouldn't require a filing with the Conservation Commission, no ground impact, just not jurisdictional. And then knowing that this meeting was coming up and the board would be looking for an update, I had reached back out, and that was the response that I received. So there's still the, and I might be missing a couple things. I didn't review Sam's letter, but I know there's still the plantings, the screening along the road, as well as decommissioning the septic system connecting to sewer, so that the septic system can be decommissioned and then paved over, so that he could store vehicles back there, because right now you can't store vehicles, obviously, on a septic system.
Right.
So...
Right. So I think personally, that's, well, a couple concerns from my end, right? One, that he's saying that he's not continuing with the permanent fence for the time being. He's not indicating that it's during the COMCON application process. He's just saying, as far as I can see, that he's decided not to do it, which, which personally I'm not okay with. That's just my opinion, not speaking up half of the board by any stretch.
Well, would a temporary fence even comply with order of conditions?
No, not in my eyes.
I wouldn't think so either.
Yeah. And then he's also not speaking to the other four non-conformances that are noted as well in there. In addition to, honestly, at the, following his, our last meeting, when he instructed us to go look at the tape, I believe he said, "We did that," and I, we came up with about four pages worth of notes for other stuff that he looks like he's doing that he shouldn't be doing, as far as he said they would not store, even as far as to have mattresses on site that his own policies say that he won't, that he doesn't take in. So overall, I'm, one, I would personally urge him to come in to the next meeting so that he can discuss with the board, and like, I think to Jason's point, as far as I'm concerned, this email about the fence does not satisfy the condition of the fencing.
So, so far, he's, he's been instructed by the building inspector to do a few things, and he hasn't done them.
Yep. So I will say...
Mattresses is another thing, and he hasn't answered for anything yet, other than the temporary fence, that now he doesn't want to apply with COMCON.
Right.
To get a real fence.
Correct. I will say, just in regards of Sam's letter, the way Sam traditionally sends out his enforcement letters, he sends them, and if it's not just like a single, like a homeowner, if it's like a business, he'll send it to the business address, and then whatever, whoever's listed as like the owner's, like, address on like, where their, like, mail is forwarded to, like the type, anyway. So Sam sends two letters. He'll send a regular letter and then a certified return receipt letter, so that's like the little...
And we know that was delivered.
The green cards.
Right.
And Sam has not received the green card back yet.
That's what, what I was driving.
Yeah.
Kind of like baseball, three strikes and you're out, and I don't know how many strikes we're at right now. I think two.
Well, right. I mean, even in regards to the green card issued, the cert, I mean, if the post office goes to try to deliver something and they're not there, they're going to leave a note saying, "Come get it at the office."
Yes.
And this could be him just not getting it, playing devil's advocate. It could be him just not going to get it at the office.
Sam said, speaking from experience, I mean, he's been doing this for a long time and sending these out for a long time. He, his, he said his general rule of thumb, I spoke with him today about this, asking if he had gotten the green card yet, and he said his general rule of thumb was he sends two, because you can't avoid your, like, your regular, a regular letter gets delivered no matter what, but people avoid their green cards. And so he kind of uses the rule of thumb where 48 hours is generally how long it takes letters to get to someone, so after 48 hours is when his clock starts ticking. So as far as, you know, enforcement, because there was the 30 days that Sam is required to give in his, for enforcement.
Right. But that was 30 days from date of the letter, right?
No, he does 30 days from 48 hours after, just so that it can...
So from July 22nd, essentially.
Essentially, yeah.
And that was up on July 20th.
That's when it was sent.
July 22nd.
That's, July 22nd is...
Yeah, the letter was dated July 20th, so essentially, the clock starts from July 22nd, essentially.
Correct. Yeah.
I'm just saying, we need to get our ducks in a row if we have to revoke the permit.
Yes, and so even just, yeah, and so...
I agree with everybody.
Yeah, and so just Sam, by Sam kind of sending that letter starts the clock, essentially, of getting our ducks in a row, because Sam's letter was, you have 30 days to comply, and then from there fines begin, and the snowball effect starts from there, so...
So by our next scheduled meeting, which should be the first Wednesday in September, that time period would have passed, unless, do we have one scheduled for? Second Wednesday in August?
No, we don't. I don't think we will require one.
I don't think we have anything, anything, but...
Yeah.
So first week, first week in September?
September 6th, right? Is that when the next meeting is?
Correct. What is 30 days from July 22nd? Monday, August 21st is 30 days from...
Plus the 48 hours, you're looking at the 23rd.
Yeah, I did from July 22nd instead of the 30th.
Okay.
Yeah. So that would be that. And Sam and I are, you know, keeping each other in the loop, so I'll touch base with him tomorrow after this meeting.
Did he give, did Sam give you any indication of what the fines would be?
I think he spelled it out in the letter, I believe.
I believe it might have. I don't know off the top of my head, if I'm completely honest, but I do know...
Let me see if I can, I can find it here, just so we can read it out into the record here.
Oh, I have it, Chris, if you want me to read it.
I got it.
Okay.
So I'm not going to read the whole letter here, but the, the penalty violation of any provision of this bylaw should be $100 for the first offense, $200 for the second offense, $300 for each subsequent offense, and just by definition, every day in non-compliance is a separate offense.
Right.
So...
Yes. So, yeah, and that again was dated July 20th.
And that's, and I would have to double check with Sam as well, but is that, is each non-conformance is its own offense times days, right? I think?
That I cannot...
Again, we'll check with Sam on that.
Yeah.
Either way, either way.
I'm not sure.
So I, so I think, again, I would urge, urge the owner to come before the board again to discuss the non-compliances and the plan to come within full compliance.
Get some clarity.
We would very much advise that, and hopefully by the time the next meeting rolls around, I personally hope that he has, he's made some rectification to some of the points here. But I think nevertheless, there's some other stuff we probably want to discuss with him as well. Sorry, I know, I know I said a lot of stuff there. Any other comments on the board?
No.
All right. Annie, anything else we need to touch on on 154?
Nope. That's all I got.
All right. Next minutes. So acceptance of minutes from May 3, 2023 meeting. Have anyone had a chance to review any fine work?
Yep. So I'll make a motion to accept May 3, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Time planner update. Annie, what do you got for us?
Not much new. Things are still moving along well as far as, I know they're not specific zoning board-related projects, but as you get my emails about them, so I'll tell you how they're going. Our 150 Center Street had feasibility study, had a meeting last Thursday. It went well. We, I believe, ended up receiving over 120 responses from that survey, so if you responded, thank you. We are going to be on the, what is it, August 28th. The Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board are going to be hosting a joint meeting so that our consultants, who we've been working with for about a year and a half on our comprehensive master plan, can do a presentation legally. The Planning Board is the entity that kind of approves the comprehensive master plan, but it's always good and very important to have the Board of Selectmen buy into that as well, and so they'll be presenting at a joint meetings and on a Monday, when the Board of Selectmen usually meets, because those tend to have a lot of viewership on public access and everything. So keep an eye out for that. That's exciting. And then other than that, in this world, the zoning world, not much else. Sewell Street is moving along. They're still doing the review. The building, the building review is still going through. The consultants are still working their way through that. Obviously, it's a very massive project, so it does take time. Yeah.
All right.
I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but I'll send you an email if I am.
All right. Thank you. Any other items not recently anticipated? The only thing I have is a reminder that it's been brought to our attention that some of the board members are just out of date with our ethics training, so if you are, please go through and do that, and if you need help with that, the Towns Clerk Office can certainly give you the links and where to go for that. Please and thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, make a motion to adjourn at 8:06 PM.
Submotioned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye, folks.
Excellent.